Six thirty and call a meeting to order. And so today is Monday, March fourteenth. And this is the committee of the whole meeting administration and finance. For the township of Edward'sburg Cardinal for the month of March. And having called the meeting to order, I'm going to proceed to. The second item on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So I have councillor Cameron moving. Does he have a second? Councillor Hunter seconded. Discussion additions if any hearing none. About to call a question, those in favor? Agenda is carried as presented. And moving to item number three on the agenda, which is disclosure of community interest. And the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening? None, none declared, none heard, and the minutes will so reflect. So I'm going now to item number four on the agenda. Which is business arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting. And the previous meeting was held on February the fourteenth. And the minutes of that meeting were distributed with the package. Now, are, is there any business arising from that meeting? Anything anybody would like to bring forward? For further clarification or questions? And I see no hands. So we'll move, there's no business arising. We'll move on to item number five on the agenda. And item number five on the agenda is delegations presentations. We have one delegation tonight, uh, which will be Mr. Brad Montroy and Mr. Greg Foss. Now, one speaker. Now, this is a very interesting, uh. Presentation from my point of view. So I wanted to say a few things, uh, in advance of the presentation because. We have received in our package, uh, quite a number of, um, back, background materials or background materials. Uh, but. We're in a very sticky situation because we know that, and we recognize that any resident of the township has a right. Uh, to address counsel. However, there are some restrictions on that right. And, uh, I've spoken to Mr. Montroy, uh, ahead of this meeting and explained to him. Uh, what some of those restrictions are. Uh, number one, and I mean, know that. This is a clean yards bylaw issue. But number one is we cannot allow a, a delegation. To criticize openly criticize in a public meeting. Uh, the actions of our staff or any of our, or, or to deal in a personal way with, with our staff. That's the first thing. And then, of course, the second thing is, is that. Once a bylaw is written and approved by the township. And receives bylaw status. The council is not in a position to interpret what that bylaw means. Once it's been a given bylaw status, uh, uh, by approval of council. It's then up to the courts to determine what the bylaw actually means. So we're in no position to actually answer in detail any of the questions. That might arise from tonight's presentation. So I've explained that to Mr. Montroy and. And, uh, I hope that he understands what I, what I'm saying here that. Uh, you know, once a ticket is issued, we cannot deal, we as a council. Cannot deal with a ticket. That's not our purview. It's, the matter is in the hands of the courts from that point on. So, Mr. Montroy, I, I understand that, you know, I've spoken to you about the restrictions on the presentation tonight. And I understand as well, uh, that our legal counsel, Mr. Warren Leroy. Has also provided some advice to Mr. Greg Foss. So with those few, uh, words of introduction, I'll turn it over for your presentation. And, um, the presentations are ten minutes and, uh. I'll, I'll just indicate that although council has received all of your material that you submitted to the clerk. What, uh, the first question that comes out in my mind, and I would ask that you bear this in mind during your presentation is. What exactly is it that you're looking for from council? If you just want us to listen to you, that's more than you're right. We're more than happy to do that. Uh, but at this point, I don't understand what the, what we call, what is the, the ask? So, uh, and I'm going to ask the clerk if she just keep her eye on the clock and the presentation is ten minutes. So go ahead then, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Montroy. Pardon?
I believe Greg is going to address you.
Oh, okay. Okay, if it's Mr. Foss, then Mr. Foss.
Yes, I am, I am in the room. What we were seeking was clarification on the Clean Guards Act and specifically. Section four subsection A and subsection B. In regards to this matter, and I will take five minutes of your time and then Mr. Montroy. Can chime in after that. And specifically in four B. Mr. Montroy's land is, uh, zoned. As rural urban. But yet it seems that the bylaw officer has taken upon himself. To ticket him on this, on this section. And on this section, being that it's. Registered as RU. He is permitted. By that bylaw. In an agricultural use to store his products for his farm. And especially seeds that can't be stored outside because the bags would be wet. They would. And have no further use to him. But yet he's been ticketed for it. Now, in. Regards to the same matter is that we had received a letter from Edward'sburg. Uh, Cardinal Township in regards to the use of a storage bin on that property. And that property or that storage bin is being used as a container. To warehouse his farming implements, his seeds. His machinery. And also. He is building a. Uh, a facility on the property. That to where most of this material would be moved into there. He does have a valid permit within the township. To build this property, but it seems that at every turn. Mr. Montroy is meeting resistance from the township. On this. Right down to the weeds around. And a letter from the township stating that there is. We suspect. That there are materials within the weeds that would be against the clean law. Well, that hasn't been inspected. That was a subjective and preemptory. Suggestion by the bylaw officer. To which Mr. Montroy is facing fines on this. And to spare the time of the council and the honorable mayor, I'll turn it over to Mr. Montroy.
The only thing I have to add to it is, um, whenever I address the, the bylaws or about some of the, uh. Concerns that he brought to me. Um, his response, he didn't understand what I was asking. First of all, he said he'd have to look into it and get back to me. Um, before he ticketed me. Um, his response was just my land doesn't qualify. There was no other, there was no other, uh. Mediation between us. Um. I use it for agricultural. I plant sixty acres of corn and, uh. He said, I just don't qualify. In the bylaw, it clearly states that it's not an issue. If you use it for agricultural, it only talks about, uh. Point two of a hectare, roughly half an acre. I, uh, currently employ someone to cut my grass, about two acres. So I'm just worried that this matter is going to go on past just this complaint. Um. I, I believe. That there is an issue that the neighbor has with me that maybe initiated this. Um, that I'm building a new building, but that's neither here nor there. I just want to make sure that I'm not going to get more. Bylaw visits because they don't like something further in view. I don't know where I have to maintain my property where I don't. Uh, whenever it's considered rural and I own sixty acres. How much do you have to keep weeds cut down on? Um. Growing up on a rural setting, working on agricultural farms. I. Treated it much the same, my properties. Um. There is vegetation that's over eight inches, but not my grass, not around my house. So that's, that's all I really wanted to see. Where, because the bylaw doesn't state how much, it just states a minimum. So I don't know, two acres isn't enough. I don't know how much I'm supposed to cut. To keep someone happy. So I just want to make sure that. Even if it's not in the bylaw and you can't address it, maybe it needs to be addressed. Um. For future sake. I guess. Anything else, Greg?
Yes. I just want to know. If the land is registered rural or RU. Why my client is being singled out. For this, and as we supplied in our. Uh, documents to Ms. Williams. Is an aerial view of the photo of the land. That shows that, that it's well within. The realm of RU. Now, the only thing that that storage, uh, container is being used for other than that is the, for the building. That he, that he has a building permit for. To save him walking over another half acre to go back to his house to get his things. And I, I just can't understand why he's being penalized for this.
Okay, so, so when you cut to the chase on all of this. The essence becomes the issue of the ticket.
No, no, there's, sorry, I have to catch up.
Excuse me. No first names in the council chamber, please?
Oh, sorry, uh, Mayor. Say, um, the issue. Is at the end, the last letter I got continues that it's another issue. If it was just the tickets which we've applied to be heard in court. But since we applied, then I got another, uh, order to comply on another. Abbreviation of the bylaw. Like it's not, on day one, he came to me and said, this is the issue. He came and I said, well, the way I read the bylaw that he left, I contacted him. He said he didn't understand that, have to look into it. Then sent me a ticket after I said, well, I fall in this. He said, I don't. So they ticketed me. That's fine. We can go to court, figure out whether I'm right or wrong. But then on December twenty eighth, I need, I received another order to comply after he's ticketed me twice for the same thing. It's just a different. Um, way that he worded it on the ticket to issue another ticket. So all the same issues are the same issue on day one. And he's, so I don't know if it's going to stop at this last order to comply. If he tickets me again, because I, I haven't been able to.
And, and just so you understand, I mean, we, we all understand the frustration with the courts these days. We know that. The POA courts are notoriously, uh, behind, uh, and our particular POA court, we know that we're all three thousand cases behind and. I talked to the court clerk just a few days ago and, and the court clerk still does not have the court schedule. So you're not the only one that is, um, uh, waiting for their day in court, I can put it that way. And, uh. That, I mean, I, I, there's nothing, there's nothing I can do about that other than to let you know that. As a group, and just so you understand, the POA courts, the provincial offenses courts are administered. Uh, through the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville, where, where the administrative body, but. We re, we rely on the regional justice to supply us with court dates because. He's the one that controls the schedule of the justices of the peace that conduct these courts. So other than to urge the regional justice. To provide us with a series of court dates, our hands are basically tied. And, uh, you know, just so that you understand, Mr. Foss understands. That as an administrative body administering the court system. We've asked the regional justice to give us those court dates. Ordinarily, uh, we would get a full year's schedule of court dates, but that hasn't happened largely because of the pandemic. Number one reason, and the second reason is largely a shortage of justices in the peace. So those are, those are issues over which we have no control. But I understand that you're, that's not your main issue. Your main issue is, am I going to continue to get more tickets?
Exactly.
Okay, so dealing with your main issue of, am I going to continue to get more tickets? I can't answer that question because once, and council can't answer that question. Because once we assign and swear in a bylaw enforcement officer. That officer is required to quote enforce the bylaw. Period. That's the, that's the mandate. You're, you're to go forth and enforce the bylaw. Now, it is not within our realm to tell him how he does his job. He, but we tell him the manner in which to do his job and the manner is issue letter. Then after that issue order, and if you're still not satisfied, issue ticket. That's the manner in which he does the job. And that manner in which he does his job is all spelled out in the bylaw. And you've got copies of that and you've seen that and you've seen those. You've seen those letters that I'm referring to and you've seen the order format that I'm referring to. And you've also got and seen copies of the tickets that I'm referring to. And I believe you've also got a copy of the set fine amendment to the bylaw that, that we put into effect. So those are all of the things that we've done and beyond that, we have no, we have no, um. We have no supervision or authorization over the manner, over the way in which. The bylaw enforcement officer does his job. So I can't help you there. So.
So who, who ensures the bylaw officer does his job properly?
The bylaw officer is, is, reports to staff. And, uh, I'm not just sure who the, what the reporting mechanism is, but. I'll, I'll ask the C O, what is the reporting mechanism for the bylaw officer?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that would, that would be through the, the clerk and then the clerk through myself.
All right, so that's the chain. So, so the chain is the bylaw officer reports to the clerk, the clerk reports to the C O.
And, and does, do they ensure that he's doing it appropriately? So like, I wonder, are they aware of the, of the whole thing?
I mean, again, that's an administrative issue for Mr., uh, for Mr. Grant.
Okay.
And so, I mean, we don't deal with those kind of issues at council meetings.
Okay.
Uh, if you want to arrange a meeting with Mr. Grant, you're free to do so. If you want to arrange a meeting with yourself and a member of council with Mr. Grant, you're free to do so. That's, that's up to you.
Okay.
Okay. One last point then, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, sorry, I can't hear you, Mr. Foss?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, one last point then. We, we would really like a clarification because this is within the purview of the council. Is under section four sub B. Where the land is registered as rural agricultural. Is that. The vegetation on the property and cleanup. Does not apply to any property. That's under RU. It, can you give us some clarification on this?
Uh, personally, I can't know. Uh, but again, because a ticket has been issued. And that's the nub of the issue of the ticket, then my response has to be the courts will now have to sort this out.
But the, the last issue isn't. The last you, issue hasn't been taken. He says he's going to return on April twenty fifth. So that's why I'm trying to see clarification on this because it just keeps on going.
Okay, well, the only thing I can suggest to you is. You know, I mean, uh, your, your, Mr. Foss is looking, is looking at, uh, clause four B of the bylaw. And it, it appears that it's got something to do with the zoning. And, uh, I'm not going to try and interpret the zones, uh, at this meeting. But, uh, how do I want to address this, uh, other than to say to you? Um, are your property boundaries clearly delineated?
Well, there's still survey stakes in.
Yeah, no, no, that's not the issue. It, it may very well be. That if the boundaries are not clearly delineated, um, by some mechanism that's, um. Uh, how shall I say, fully, uh, visible to the bylaw enforcement officer, uh, that, that. It, it's making his job more difficult. I don't know. That may be part of it. I don't know. Uh, that's something that if you wanted to speak to Mr. Grant about, you could speak to Mr. Grant about that. If that's the issue. And I, I don't know that.
The issue, the.
Is the, is the, is the place where the new building is being built? Is it being built on the agricultural property?
Well, it's all zone rural, uh, residential. There's no agricultural. If the clarification is.
Oh, hang on, no, hang on.
And it says, it says any property can be used as agricultural and if so. It doesn't need to be maintained other than half an acre around the dwelling. That's, that's what it says. So.
Well, again, and again, that's what you think it says, but that's, that's up to the courts to determine if that's what it says. We, you know, I mean.
I get that you don't want to get in the middle of it. I do.
Well, it's not our job, really.
Oh, we understand.
Our job is to, our job is to. Once the, once the bylaw has been drafted. And approved by legal counsel, our job is to give the bylaw, give that bylaw, bylaw status. And that's what we do. And that's where our job ends.
And you, and you directed me tonight that, that it's, it's the clerk and the C O that makes sure that the bylaw. Um, make sure the bylaw officer is, is enforcing them appropriately though, correct?
I, I, I didn't say that. I said, that's the reporting mechanism.
If, if you have a boss above you, someone has to ensure that you're doing your job right.
Yes, but you have to remember that in municipal law, a bylaw officer. It has an allegiance to the bylaw, not to an individual. It's, it's like the clerk and it's, well, the bylaw officer is not a statutory officer. An officer of the corporation has a, has a fiduciary duty to the bylaw. Not to the people that he reports to. It's a difference. That difference is.
If someone's not doing their job right, I'm, I'm wondering who, who ensures that he does his job right? There must be someone within the township that ensures that. That someone is doing their job right.
Well, that's the council.
Okay.
We oversee where the governing body overall.
If I wait for two years to go to court on this matter for whatever reason. And, and it is in court is decided that I'm right. Does anything ever come of it? And do you actually ensure that the bylaw is enforcing it appropriately? Or is every other farmer that potentially has land that the neighbor doesn't like? Could just call the bylaw and they're going to go ticket them one maybe bit at a time.
I'll answer your question this way. The bylaw officer is a peace officer, the same as an O P P officer. An O P P officer can issue me a ticket for going a hundred and thirty when I feel in my own mind I was doing only ninety. And it goes to court and I win. End of discussion, case dismissed.
But there, there is a committee that's in charge of O P P to make sure that they, they don't, uh. Overreach too. So there's, there's got to be some higher standard. No, I, I, I feel like there is.
Can I answer that question? I don't know the O P P.
But I can use the O P P as an example. But I believe like if someone, if someone gets mistreated. And they take it to, I don't know what committee would be, be called, but there would be someone that would make sure that, that, that it was done appropriately. The same thing is what I'm seeking here, that the bylaw is actually being enforced appropriately. And, and, and not for one reason or another, um, taking it outside of the means of the bylaw.
Okay, I understand your issue. Uh, and we've listened to your discussion.
Anything else, Greg?
Uh, just one thing, the clarification on four B because this was passed by council. Now, the bylaw officer has issued tickets. Against my client. Regarding four B. When he's in full compliance. So what you're saying is, is. He's using a literal interpretation. On that bylaw and issuing tickets. That my client now has to fight in court. Because it's very. It's not. Strict enough or it could have many literal. Answers to it.
Are you still there, Mr. Foss?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay. Uh, sometimes the, sometimes the, the internet freezes up and we don't know whether you're there. So, I mean, the only way I can answer the question again is, is point out that the court sorted out. And that, you know, I mean, what, that, that's the way these things get adjudicated. They get adjudicated out of an independent third party. By an independent third party.
Okay.
How it costs to who is my question. Is it going to cost the taxpayers to take this in court?
There's always a cost to go to court.
So it's going to cost the taxpayers too?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just forcing bylaws. I mean, we have, we have, we, we now have to appear in court to defend our. Our bylaw officer's position and the ticket. That's the nature of the beast. That's the way the system works.
So with my client's land being, uh, delegated the RU. And a ticket's been issued against him. Then we fight that in court. Instead of the ticket being rescinded.
There's no mechanism to rescind the ticket other than the person that wrote it.
Which is employee of the township.
It's, it's, you, you, yeah. Technically speaking, that individual is an employee, technically speaking. But the, but the employee has a duty to the bylaw. To enforce the bylaw. That's the duty. Okay, I think it must be past our ten minutes. I missed your hand. If we, if you put it off, I missed you totally.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question to Mr. Montroy. Uh, I'm looking at the map that shows your property, the trailer. I've been by it many times. I haven't seen it. I would just like to know whether your property is to the east of where the trailer is located.
I own, so that's the other thing with the bylaw. He keeps on interpreting two different properties. I own two pieces of property. My house, I live reside at seventeen oh six. I mean, the pro.
So it's seventeen oh six to the east of the, or the west?
Like if you were at the road, uh, on the road and I, my house is to the west. The trailer sits, the trailer sits in, in the field. It's kind of a weird shape. So. On the picture that I, I provided with the trailer, there's a red line that I, I drew roughly on.
Yes.
That's the property line between my two properties, not the neighbor's property. The neighbor's property is a hundred and fifty feet to the, to the east.
Yes, okay, I understand that. And then can you just tell me whether you'd like to or not, where you're going to build the new? Whether you'd like to or not, where you're going to build the new building?
The new building is just zoomed, it was zoomed out. It's it's. To work to the north, I guess you would call it.
To the north of the trailer?
Oh, it's it's in behind. So I own sixty acres, right? So my property stretches behind all the neighbor's property.
Yes.
Which is where the problem has arose.
Yes.
I built in the front three acre field. And the neighbor wasn't happy about it and vocalized that to me. And then all this bylaw stuff happened afterwards.
Can't choose your neighbor?
No, you can.
Okay, so.
So the the shop is up already.
Oh.
It's it's obviously, it's under construction, but it's it's visible. If you drive by and you looked.
Is that the one set way back in?
It is.
So then that is to the east of the trailer.
Yes, northeast, yes.
Northeast, yes. Thank you. That's all right. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we've gone well past our ten minutes and. I think that that pretty much concludes the presentation. I want to thank you for coming and. I apologize for for the restrictions that we have to put on it, but that's just the nature of the of the. Of the way we work. And we're we're and just like everybody else, and I want you to know that. You know, we get our powers only as are designated to us under the municipal act. And those are not unfettered powers. They're very. They're very feathered, very controlled. Okay.
Sorry, Pat, just just one question.
No first name, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have one question. As, just just to clarify, have any counselors actually reached into the bylaw officer?
That would be inappropriate. That would be totally inappropriate. We do not supervise the bylaw officer.
Okay, I I just wonder if if any of them.
No, the reporting mechanism, as has been explained. The bylaw officer reports to the clerk, the clerk reports to the C A O. It it would be totally inappropriate for any member of council.
So they.
To approach the bylaw officer as to the manner in which he does his job.
That they wouldn't vocally say that they did, that obviously.
May I pardon?
They wouldn't vocally say that they did reach to. To the bylaw in any fashion.
They 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 can't.
Can't. Okay.
Okay, all right, I'm moving on to item number six on the agenda. And item number six A deals, well, it's titled land control. And it deals with O B C, the Ontario Building Code. Part eight of the Ontario Building Code, which is Septic Approvals and Inspection Services. And I just wanna report to council that. At our most recent. Committee of the whole county, committee of the whole meeting. Mayor Malanca, who is the chair of the Leeds-Grenville Landarch. Health Unit. Confirmed. To. Members of County Council, the ten mayors, the seven, nine mayors, ten mayors rather. That. The health unit has formally. Terminated. The enforcement of the Ontario Building Code Part Eight. Approval and inspection services effective October the first. So that is now formalized, and I think I reported to council some time ago that that was in the works. And so now it it is formal. And I'm just going to ask Mr. Grant to just speak. Quickly and briefly as to the steps that are being taken. Within the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal to ensure that those services are going to be provided. To our general public on an ongoing basis. So, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So. Want to indicate that the 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 plan is for S A P to bring a report back at the at the April meeting. We've we've had some conversations with the South Nation Conservation Authority with respect to assuming those services. They. They seem receptive to. Taking that on. And hopefully by the April meeting, we'll have a a draft M O view for for consideration.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Grant. And I think the other thing council should be aware of is that. Our previous arrangement with the Leeds-Grenville Larnark. Health Unit was that. That service is provided on a cost recovery basis where the cost is borne by the users of the service. So I'm assuming, Mr. Grant, that that's the same. Sort of financing model that we will try to achieve. In our relate, in building and developing a memorandum of understanding relationship with the South Nation Conservation.
Mr. Mayor, that that is correct. The South Nation has a free schedule with respect to the to the Part Eight and with the. User pay style system.
Thank you very much. And so now I'm moving on to another issue that comes from County Council, which is six B. The Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. And its implementation. So let me go back. Just by way of. Review to saying that. Over a year ago. The. Now, is it Minister, the Solicitor General? Which minister is it? Yeah, Minister Solicitor General. Mandated that all townships, all municipal entities. Were to develop. And submit. A community safety and wellbeing plan. By July the first of last year. Now, the ten townships within the county, United Counties of Leeds and Grenville determined. That it would be more cost efficient. To have. One group. Prepare the community safety and wellbeing plans for all townships. And so a contract was left. And a contractor. Engaged in that service and. Towards the spring of last year. They produced a community safety and wellbeing plan. Which was adopted by County Council prior to the July deadline. And then, if I recall correctly, that same plan. Came to each of the townships and we approved it as our community safety and wellbeing plan. So, so far, we've done the first step, which was to create and report and submit. Now, the next question became, well. Are we obligated to implement this plan? Because as many mayors have expressed. Again, the province is asking us to implement. A community and wellbeing, community safety and wellbeing plan, but they're not providing any dollars for us to do that. So many mayors were upset and said, well, until this solicitor general makes it very clear. That there's going to be money associated with the implementation, we're not taking any other steps. That issue was brought up by Roma and by A M O. To the Solicitor General. And the Solicitor General. Responded. As follows. And I'll be brief. You were requested. To prepare and produce those plans. And to submit them. You are now directed to implement them. We wanna know how you're gonna implement them. And don't talk to me about money. In so many words, not in so many words, but that was the message. So, the issue came back to County Council. Would we try to implement these plans on a countywide basis? Through the offices of the United Counties? Where most of the resources already lie? Or would we try to implement those plans on a township by township basis? Now, I can't. Recall whether our. Council, our township council, gonna ask Mr. Grant and the clerk to give me guidance here. Did we make a determination or didn't we as to how we would approach this issue?
So, Mr. Mayor, there there's been no, no decision made by council on on how. Implementing with respect to. And to at the township level or or county level.
All right, and the reason that this becomes a timely issue. Is because the C A O of the United Counties has convened a meeting of all of the township's C A Os. And this item. Implementation. Of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan will be on the agenda. And. The C A O of the United Counties will be looking for. Mr. Grant and all of the other C A Os to provide him with direction. Now, I don't have to tell you that most of the resources. That are going to be required to implement this plan. Provision of social housing. Several other resources. Oh, provision of social assistance. Provision of a number of other services. Those provisions. And those services already lie within. The Social Services Department of the United Counties. So I wanted it brought up here tonight. So that we could have at least a this quick discussion around the table to provide direction to Mr. Grant. So when he goes to the meeting with the C A O, he can say, well, my council is thinking as follows. So. I'd like to hear at least one or two expressions around the table. Which will serve as direction for Mr. Grant without actually taking a formal position at this, at this point. To provide you with a bit of guidance. Let me say that some townships are quite adamant. That they will. Deal with this onto their own. Other townships are quite adamant that. They would prefer to see these community safety and wellbeing plans. Implemented and administered. Through the United Counties Joint Services Committee. So. That's the issue on the table, Councilor Cameron. Open for chairs, open for discussion. Councilor Cameron, Councilor Hunter.
Mr. Mayor, did we ever receive a a copy of the plan that the United Counties had sent us for approval, did we? Did we ever get that? And did we get it as a council package or?
Through through to the chair, yes, that that was provided. I want to say. Either either May, May or June, some something tells me it was June and it was. Passed the council at the end of June and posted on the on the website by the by the July first.
So the documentation would probably be in the June package then. Of of council or of the committee?
It would have been in in both.
Okay.
And potentially committee package.
Okay.
And if anybody wants a copy, the clerk will be able to provide a copy.
Correct.
Councilor Hunter.
I wouldn't think there would be too much discretion. I mean, I think it should be handled handled by the counties. Community wide. Most of our social services would be states handed through. Through the counties now, most of the townships with welfare and all other types of social services are on hand with the counties. I think as well as. Plan out where it should. Should land, they've got the people there to deal with it. And the county stands a lot better chance of getting grant money towards it than each individual. Township trying to apply for it. Problems would be looking to the most efficient way to handle it. One department handling ten townships will be a lot cheaper than every township trying to provide. Probably take at least two staff to handle that all all the time, so.
Other comments? I say what we're looking for here is just general discussion. Other comments? Deputy Mayor?
Just echo a lot of what, a lot of what Councilor Hunter said. I think. That's dealt with, where the services are already dealt with, which is which is the county's.
And Christ likes what if we take it ourselves, who's who's gonna? It's about to hire taxpayers?
Yep, it would be. Well, the big thing is, we don't know exactly. You know, we can't at this point even. Picture. How big a problem this is. We know, for example, this is just a, this is just an example. In late last year, a long, well, long about spring, fall last year. The the province mandated that the United Counties would do an enumeration. And create a by name list. Of homeless people in the United Counties. And they picked a date in September as the date. When. All of the homeless. People in the United Counties would be identified by name. So at that. Date. There was a huge effort made. By, I would say, pretty close to twenty different agencies. To identify all of the homeless people that were homeless as of that date. Of that number of, which I think was around one hundred and ninety five. Something like half agreed to have their name placed. On the by name list. So take around eighty people. That agreed to have their name placed on a. Homeless list as of that date. Men, it's reported to us at the Joint Services Committee last week. That there are now thirty five names left on that by name list of homeless people. So. We really don't know the extent of these problems and it's a moving target, so to get to the cost, it's very difficult to determine. But to. Make you further aware. As of. Wednesday's meeting. And Tuesday's meeting last week. Council. First of all, Joint Services Committee. And then endorsed by Committee of the Whole. Has agreed to hire. A one year contract. Affordable housing coordinator. Now. We sent, yeah, we sent a letter. In opposition to that, I was the only one that voted against it, but. I still feel that we did the right thing, but that that's all part of this. Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. Okay, so I think everybody has spoken. I don't know, Mr. Grant, we, I I don't think we've landed on a motion that would tie this up in any way, shape or form. But I think at least you've got an expression around the table. And I know that Mr. Calery will have his hands full with this. And then the last item on item six C is the international plowing match. And I just want to indicate that. There are. A number of issues that have to be clear in everybody's mind. We had the presentation from Ann Weir, from the from the Economic Development Department of the United Counties. You all saw. What a tremendous big undertaking the two thousand and seven international plowing match was. In excess of. Three hundred thousand people, I think it was. Over the seven or five day period, whatever it was. A big undertaking was was well in excess of a year into planning. And the host, the sponsor was. The United Counties of Leeds and Grenville using a location in Rita Lakes Township. But the host clearly was the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville. This plowing match, which will be this September. The host is clearly North Grenville. The United Counties of Leeds and Grenville will attempt to play a supporting role. We will. Commit. About two hundred and twenty five to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our. United Counties showcase. We will attempt to showcase. Living, working. And business in the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville. I've got quite a number of businesses that want to participate. And it looks like they're going to participate within the United Counties Booth Area. And the booth area in two thousand and seven, as you saw from Ann Weir's presentation, was three distinct tents. Each running a different theme. Whether it'll be the same this year or not, I don't know. And we're from the United Counties Economic Development Department will sort of be the lead for the United Counties. So, all of that is background. If you have any businesses that are looking to participate. I would suggest that they, their best point of contact is Ann Weir. I would suggest that they, their best point of contact is Ann Weir. And I'll let it go at that for now, because the last communication that I had from Ann Weir indicated that at this point, North Grenville could not even indicate. First of all, at this point, North Grenville has not provided a layout of how the grounds will be laid out. Nor have they provided the United Counties with what size of a venue we may have. Nor have they provided any requests for assistance from the United Counties. So things are a little bit slow getting started, but we're hoping that they'll pick up in the next little while. Okay, so that's, unless there are questions, I'm gonna move on. I had to get all those items out, because I didn't want anybody saying, oh, you didn't know what this. All right, so the first item under now, item seven on the agenda, action information items is seven A, which is the proclamation of Green Shirt Day. And the briefing note, as indicated, uh, it's been done before the leader, meet, morning. The mayor just signs the proclamation, right? All right, so moving on, item number seven B, which is the twenty twenty-one Statement of Regeneration and Expenses. That report is required to be, uh, prepared and posted prior to March thirty-first. Uh, you've all received copies of it. The United Counties has, uh, produced their copy and it is also in public circulation. Uh, I don't believe that there's any recommendation associated with this. It's just a requirement under the Act and the staff has met the requirement under the Act. All right, now, and I, I assume, by the way, that, uh, I've read the briefing note, but I can't remember, but I'm assuming that it just gets posted on the township website, does it, or how, is that how we handle it? Okay, thank you. All right, now I'm at item seven C, which is the twenty twenty-two General Insurance Renewal. And there is a briefing note with regard to that renewal, and, uh, is there a recommendation?
Mayor, no, there's no recommendation, just wanted to, uh, get it out, uh, to committee, the, the, the main, uh, main change was, uh, shifting the uh, general liability deductible from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. And that's, uh, that, that, that's how it was bound to put us, uh, uh, into, uh, in line with, uh, with the budget of insurance map for this, for this year.
Okay, so when I look then on page fifty-eight of ninety-five, uh, now which, what, what, which deductible went from twenty-five to fifty? Is that the municipal general liability?
Uh, yes, Mister Mayor, that is the municipal general liability.
So it went to twenty-five?
It went, it went to fifty, was it twenty-five thousand for the deductible, it's went to the deductible is now fifty thousand?
Okay, and so does that make the premium one-ten instead of the one-thirty-seven?
That is correct.
Oh, okay, all right, so that's the one-ten instead of one-thirty, and so that determines the total, right? Total premium all lines would not be the three-nineteen on the briefing note that I have in front of me. It would be the three-nineteen less the differential there, about twenty-seven, about seventeen thou, two, twenty-seven thousand.
So, yeah, so the, the, the total, uh, twenty twenty-two premium would be, uh, two hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars before the provincial sales tax.
Two ninety-two, three eighty-six?
Three, three eighty-six.
Okay, all right, so, so the briefing note that we've got in front of us needs to be just cleaned up a little bit then. Because the total premium all lines is now two ninety-two, three eighty-six with a fifty thousand deductible on the municipal general liability. Right?
That is, that, that is correct. That, that's provided within the, uh, within the background on page fifty-seven.
Okay, so any questions here, folks? No questions, I'm about to move on. Okay, no questions, I'm about to move on. All right, so the next, uh, item on the agenda is seven D, which is the update on the use of corporate resources for election purposes. And we do have a policy to prevent us from getting into trouble. And we need policies to keep us out of trouble. Okay, so, uh, the, the, there is a recommendation here, because the staff has updated the policy. Uh, now, I'll just ask the, through the C A O to the clerk, do, do you wanna provide any sort of general overview as to what the policy changes are? Through the C A O to the clerk.
Should, thank you, um, so upon the completion of the twenty eighteen, uh, election cycle, staff always make notes, take little, you know, hints here and there as to what went well, what we could have improved on, uh, so coming up to the very impending twenty twenty-two municipal election, uh, we have reviewed and updated the draft policy to incorporate the new township uh, meeting reform policy, as well as included two issue, two additional uh, clauses under section four of the application, uh, item N nine O, just to provide clarification both to public, potential candidates, uh, staff, also a facility members that are utilizing other spaces that may not be seen as a township office, um, so specifically the town, any campaign signage other than nor, sorry, no campaign related signage and, uh, materials can be displayed on municipally owned facilities or properties. Um, there is a bit of confusion for certain candidates in the twenty eighteen elections to what they consider municipal facilities or any property of nature, and there is nothing clear in the original bylaw that stated, they could not be on any municipal facilities or properties such as uh, library property that we own or arena facilities that we own. They, what, they, when you're a raffle, let's just say that. Um, additionally, the new other section is in regards to any members of council, candidates, committee members, third parties cannot print or distribute any campaign related materials using municipal funds. So for instance, any honorariums that are given to committee members, council members, any community grants issued to community groups, organizations, uh, it would be against that policy to use any of those funds for campaign related materials.
Um, okay, so Councilor Cameron first.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mister Mayor, through you to, uh, the clerk. Uh, I just want some, a little more clarification here regarding property. Are, are, are what are we doing about township-owned roadways, or I should say, um, along roadways?
So through the Chair, road allowances, uh, that would be impossible to say the least to try to enforce. And there is municipal road allowances literally everywhere throughout our municipality. We aren't going to that extent, because that's a general place that anyone's front yard can technically be a portion of a road allowance in some cases. Uh, so it's more along the lines of a municipal facility, the yards surrounding that municipal facility, um, municipally owned parks. So the major areas, and there was concerns.
Appreciate that, sir.
Yeah, thank you, like, uh, so that, and, and so do I, so.
Then I have Deputy Mayor, just a comment.
Um, uh, through you to the, uh, I certainly was one of the committee members who had a sign or two uh, brought, brought back here and had to pick them up at, at the township office, because I put them in places that I, that I shouldn't have. Um, so, uh, my thought or my question would be, maybe, um, and I don't remember being provided a copy of, of this with my election package, and I very well may have been. Um, but if it is not, um, is that something that we could include for, uh, because there will be new candidates, let's, let's face it, and um, the more information that, that they know about, the, just maybe the less that, uh, you folks will have to be able to get up here.
Any other questions? I have sort of a cleanup type of question. In the briefing note and in the policy, it refers to specifically the South Edward Spur Recreation Building in Johnstown, and it makes it clear that as long as that facility is rented by an independent third party paying the full rent, it can be used for election purposes for use, I think the example it's used, uh, uh, an all candidates meeting. So I'm assuming that if that independent third party has paid rent and convened an all candidate, uh, evening, and we're invited, that we can bring our election materials in there at that.
So through Chair, yes, that is correct, that was amended, uh, partway through the election period in twenty eighteen. Um, originally, it was prohibited from any municipal facilities. However, due to the limited locations in the village of Johnstown, an exception was made to permit that given on, and only if such groups as, uh, South Edward Spur Recreation or South River Chamber of Commerce were renting the facility for an all candidates meeting, that campaign material could be included. Specifically only for that night, and then it would have to be cleared out, otherwise it would be picked up and the candidates would be required to either come back to our office to pick up or they would tell us, um, if they weren't to keep it at all.
Any other questions here? If there are no other questions, I do believe that there is a recommendation. Uh, did I not see a recommendation, but that, no, I love, yes, I did. Recommends, committee recommends that council adopt the updated use of corporate resources for election purposes policy as attached, so Chair is looking for a mover. Okay, so I have Deputy Mayor DeShaw moving, does he have a second, a second? Counselor Dilavas seconding, any further discussion? No further discussion, about to call a question, those in favor? Okay, the motion is carried. So I'm assuming that that'll come forward at the, uh, meeting. All right, now just give me one second, get my paperwork here, five, five, seven. Mess. One. Three sixty-five, twenty-one sixty-six, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, yes, I'm on sixty-six. And, uh, that is item number seven E to update the code of conduct for council and committee. And there is a recommendation here, and there was quite a change to the code of conduct. I won't let you go into that, I won't ask you to go into that, except that I see that basic, the basic thrust here is that it, it not only affects members of council, it, it, it includes members of committees. That seems to be the basic thrust. Okay, so questions if any with regard to this policy, Counselor Cameron?
Yes, uh, to start with, we'll go to page number sixty-nine. And we have, uh, uh, which I appreciate very much, the red, uh, the red impacted, and then we also have blue. Uh, could I just get a, uh, a, a reason why we have two different colors here? What is the blue represent?
So through the Chair, it's just a matter of occasionally I was working on my desktop. Alternatively, I was working on my, uh, laptop, which showed different color track changes as well as new managers such as C A O clerk and treasurer. Uh, sometimes proof these documents, so every time someone else's track changes, it shows different colors.
Okay, uh, no, no, no problem, thank you on that, and then I do have one other, Mister Mayor, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, I had the page marked and, and for some reason, I can't find it. However, it's one of the clauses where members of committee cannot be a relative of a council member. If the clerk could just direct me to where that item is, I have a question regarding. I have no idea why I, I can't find that, Mister Mayor, I, I do apologize.
Um, well, okay, so let's, uh, we'll take it at face value, that's there, uh, is there a question?
Yes, there, yeah, okay, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, so, so let's, let's assume then that, that what I, I stated was, 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 is written here, where, um, um, for instance, uh, uh, my spouse, for instance, if I'm sitting on council, uh, they could not apply for, say, an advisory to Public Works Committee. Am I, am I correct in understanding that?
Through the Chair, yes, that is, that is also addressed in our committee terms of reference. It would be, um, appropriate to have a spouse, son, daughter, aunt, uncle, sister, brother, because there's gonna be show favoritism.
I, 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 I do agree, but I wanna take that one step further, Mister Mayor. Let's reverse the, the role here. Does this prevent someone from running for council if there is a member of, of, a spouse, we'll say, or, or close member on a committee?
Well, actually, I think, I'll jump in here, I, I think that during, uh, an election period, uh, everything's open.
What about a by-election?
Well, um, uh, okay, a by-election, different story.
So through the Chair, as the mayor stated, when it comes to an election, everything is free and open, as long as there's nothing under the Act that prohibits you from running. For staff, if we decide to run for a position at council, we have to take a leave of absence from our duties of the Chair here. Or any of our staff positions, even if it wasn't senior management or internal staff that you, that you would have to be the same. Um, even in by-elections, it would be fairly open-ended, two spouses could run for the same council. With nothing prohibiting in the Act that two members of the same family run for a position.
No, but that's, that's not what I'm getting at. What I'm getting at is, let's say we have to run a by-election, which we, which, which could poss, be a possibility at any time. Um, so if I have, for instance, I'm not on council, but one of my family members is on a committee, that would prevent me from actually running in that by-election. If I wanted.
Through the Chair, that's, when it comes to that, uh, terms of reference is superseded by the Municipal Act, the Municipal Elections Act, so if you were to become a council member and your committee, your family member was on a committee, we'd have to review that and see if you were even on that committee. First of all, uh, for these purposes, they're, all council serves on all committees or committees, so however, if they were an advisory committee and there was only one or two, sorry, one or two members of council on that committee and you were not on it, I don't think it would be as big of an issue, but we've never encountered that before, so that would be something we have to review again.
Then, then.
We actually have in past ti, times. And, and point, point was, you got elected, you had a member of a certain amount of committee, they'd have
Oh, I see. Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you for the acknowledgement.
They can stay on until you're elected, you might run, that doesn't mean you're getting elected.
We all know that. Okay, so other questions here with regard to this? I do have, I do have a recommendation in front of me, I think you told me it was on page sixty-six. Sixty-six. And so there it is. And if there are no other questions, oh.
Just a comment, just, um, I know that I had asked, um, and hoped that this would, that this would get done, I'm quite happy to see that it's come along in that. Um, you know, as, as members of committees, um, are now allowed into closed session, then, and they do have votes. I, you know, I'm very happy to see the code of conduct extended, um, to all members, the same as, as what it is to uh, council, so, um, again, I guess, I guess with this, uh, hoping when, when this does finalize, that it would go along to all committee members, so that they now understand that, um, the rules are the same for them as they are for, for, for council members. Having said that, I'm quite happy to move this recommendation as well.
Okay, so I have Deputy Mayor DeShaw moving, does he have a second?
He does.
And Counselor Cameron seconding. Further discussion, if any. Hearing none, about to call a question, those in favor?
All right.
Motion is carried. Okay. Okay. And now I'm at item number seven F, which is the twenty twenty two township budget. So here we are, I guess we could have called this budget meeting number six. So we're dealing with a lot of issues. And I like, I just wanted to thank the staff for kind of boiling down those other five meetings. Into this briefing note that we see in front of us. Uh, and I think what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna turn directly to the recommendation, which is on page eighty of ninety five. And uh. The recommendation, the committee, the recommendation that we have in front of us is that the committee recommends that council adopt. The twenty twenty two budget estimates with a two point eight one percent increase. Now, uh I'm assuming that that means increase in the tax rate. Is that correctness, Sister Carter?
Yes, the recommendation does read right after.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah. And direct staff to prepare final options to borrow one million dollars to fund the storm water management projects. All right, so. Further discussion, Counselor Cameron?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh through you to, to um Madam Treasurer. I just want to be very, very clear here that it is one million dollars we're going to borrow. And that is to do the Johnstown and Spencerville systems. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And it will, and once again, it will be two point eight one. I think, Mr. Mayor. I, I think I can live with that recommendation, Mr. Mayor. Um, we're getting close to uh the month of April. Um, I'd like to see this. We've been at it now, as you stated, six times. And I, I, I think it's time to. Get it back. Uh I don't like borrowing the, the million dollars. I, I really don't. But I'm, I'm, I'm convinced that the staff has done what they can do to have this cut down. As much as they possibly can.
Counselor Hunter?
Well, I'm in, I'm in favor of the recommendation here, just one clarification. We're going to borrow. A million dollars, but uh I think council still has options. Once we agree that we're going to borrow a million, exactly where we borrow that million from.
Yeah, that's a second issue.
Yeah.
So not included.
Not here, but it's an issue council needs to discuss it.
Okay. And. And I guess, uh just to get some context here, I'm gonna go just, uh I, I didn't see any other. Go ahead. Uh so, but over to Mr. Grant, just for a second. Are we any closer to getting the final M O E approvals and getting the tenders for these two projects out the door?
So uh, Mr. Mayor, we, we did have some correspondence with the uh N E C P. With, with, with respect, they, they wanted some additional um information and uh. They're, they're going to be requiring a sampling uh program with respect to uh well water uh during that project. So uh we, we made a response back to them and uh I believe that was uh submitted on Friday. Uh so we should, uh we should be extremely close to uh having tenders issued within, within the next week or two.
Well, have the final tender documents been ready?
Uh the, the final tender documents are ready, they just uh, they, they, they just need some final uh tweaking. And uh we should be, uh they should be out the door.
Okay, so Counselor Dilaw.
No, I just like to, uh, I agree with uh Counselor Cam or Counselor Hunter, but where we're going next. And I, I'll go with the recommendation that we accept this with the term of fifteen years.
Uh that, that's a separate issue. We're not going to deal with that issue tonight.
We're not going to deal with that?
No. I don't, that's not on the agenda here tonight, is it?
For just a grand, we're gonna.
Borrow.
Two point eight one and borrow.
Have the vote. I'm just wondering if there are any of our reserves that we could reduce the contribution to. To eat down that million dollars slightly, or if there's a will by anyone on the committee to. Eat that million dollar ask down before we, uh before we finalize that, that number. I forgot, I left that document on the table, so.
Yeah, uh I, I haven't called a question on the motion either. And, you know, in response to Deputy Mayor's question, I'm a bit embarrassed. I left my.
I left mine on the table, kitchen table.
And so did I.
I did, I had that ringed one and I left it on the table. I was doing it on the top.
Right. Um, one of the things that we could maybe do to address that issue, I have the motion on the table. But the motion that's on the table is says. Uh and direct staff to prepare final options to borrow one million. We could insert the words up to. A million dollars to fund the storm water management project. Do you regard that as a friendly amendment?
Yes, I agree, yeah.
You'd agree with that? That's a friendly amendment. That's the way it's worded. You have my support as well. Okay, so then uh the, the motion is going to include the words up to. And then the whole question of how we go about this is a different issue.
Yeah.
And uh, okay, so if there's no further discussion, I'm just gonna state my brothers here. I'm, I'm really uh not in favor of borrowing a million dollars. I could tell you that right from the beginning, especially for this kind of project. And having, uh, but I'll go along with the majority of council and I sense that this is gonna pass. And we've had five budget meetings and um I, I'm, I'm gonna say that council's been successful in wearing me down. My, I would have so much resistance left. But uh it, it, and I'm gonna say, one of the reasons that I'm so reluctant is because I know what pushes our, our uh. Our, our long sought after project, which is to convert some more gravel roads to hard surface. It pushes that project away because once we actually execute on, on this, if it passes. Once we actually execute on this, our, our borrowing, our, our repayability, if I put it that way. Our repayability is really uh constricted unless we're prepared to have a four or five percent tax increase. And I think most of us are, you know, most of us are at the point where, you know, here's a two point eight one percent increase. And we're, we're prepared to live with that, but we all know how difficult that's gonna be. So those few words, um.
Can I jump back on?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think.
We're still under discussion of the motion.
Yeah, and I think, you know, um, I, I'm, I think we all know that I'm a zero percent guy usually. Um, a, you know, two, two point eight one, I think, uh staff has done, especially, you know, it's, it's a difficult year. It's been a difficult couple of years and um without any assessment or any changes with impact. You know, any changes to impact, um it, it's hard to, to make a budget without, without any of those property increases. So um I think uh as council and, and to all staff uh through, you know, difficult couple of years. It's, it's fantastic to keep it at actually two point, two point one eight, so compliments to.
Two point eight one.
Two point eight one, excuse me, I'd like to, but two point eight one, so compliments to uh, to everyone in the hard work. Uh that they've put into, to getting the stuff.
Okay, Counselor Hunter?
I'll just make one comment back to that. Probably be the last budget I set in on. One thing I've learned, learned over a lot of years of serving on council. By having a zero percent increase, you just cut your throat for the future. No business can live in a zero percent increase. Everything was up in price. Every township always has a request for more services, better services along the way. And you gotta have an, an increase. Everybody's paying. Every time they negotiate a pay, they negotiate a pay raise. Every time we get a pay raise, that affects our costs here. And, and you gotta have a basic increase. We've had years we did zero percent increase and then ended up, and we look at the cycle where. Three years down the road, then we had to have, have a six or seven percent increase. It got hidden because the counties or school board cut, cut theirs a way down, so the rate payer didn't really notice that the township got. An extra seven percent in there, but still in, still a taxpayer that, that's paying. And most people on any budget, you can live with a two, two and a half percent increase every year. Everybody knows everything goes up. Yeah, you can eat that, but when you all of a sudden hit a six or seven percent increase in one, one year, that's a big. Big jump. Your budget, over now we have a monthly pay. You're paying two thou- if you're paying a two thousand dollar a year tax, that's really, it's two percent. That's forty bucks. If you can afford the two thousand, the forty bucks is on break.
Yeah. Sorry. Uh and, well, you're, before you come back in, you're talking to the voice of, 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 of an old experienced voice.
Yeah, I sure, I sure.
I'm a zero percent guy too.
Who's also making an argument on, on taxation that, that is from twenty sixteen and it's twenty twenty two. We've seen houses uh double in cost this year. We've got doubling in gas prices. We've got inflation of the wasio cost. I know everybody doesn't think that forty dollars to the average taxpayer is a whole lot of money. To some people it is. It is a lot of money, especially if their home went from a hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand uh in their next tax roll. And they have to pay twenty five percent more in taxes next year. So I know why you say it's a two point eight one and that, and that we gotta keep increasing it. But evaluations will happen the next impact increase, the way that home sales have over the last two years. People are gonna be paying a lot more in tax over the next four years. And, and applying two point eight one every year plus the assessment increase is going to be out of control for people. So I get that forty dollars doesn't seem like a lot, but it will be a lot. Add in all the other factors.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta, gotta look at this, any sensible counsel, and this has been brought up by impact. And, and lots of everyone, she municipal government. That when impact does bring this in and, and that assessment rate jumps, maybe doubles your assessment. That's gonna be up to the council the day that's sitting there, the judge doesn't just automatically put that tax rate on that assessment. That's where the, our financial advisor here is going to look at it and, and. She's gonna bring down, we had an eight million dollar budget. She's gonna realign that down, that whatever that tax rate is brings in eight billion dollars. And then the council the day needs to start over again and says, now we got this much. Now instead of a one percent bringing you in sixty five dollars, a one percent bringing in a hundred twenty five dollars. So your two percent still figures out.
Yeah. Okay, so we're, we're talking.
The, yeah. And, and in the end result, we're the ones that set the rate.
That's right.
That's valid. The, the municipal tax rate. Okay, so further discussion on the motion that I have in front of me? Hearing no further discussion, I'm about to call a question on the motion that I have in front, front of me.
Can you read, can you, can you, can you uh? Read it, please, again?
Okay, so I'm gonna read the motion as amended.
Yes.
Because it does have a friendly amendment.
Yes.
It came after it was moved and seconded. I'm gonna read it as amended. And then I've been asked for recorded votes, so I'm gonna take a recorded vote. So just give me one second uh to create my ladder here, sorry. Okay, I have my ladder ready. So now I'm gonna read the motion as amended. The committee recommends that council adopt the twenty twenty two budget estimates. With a two point eight one percent increase in the twenty twenty two residential tax rate. And direct staff to prepare final options to borrow up to. One million dollars to fund the storm water management projects. All right, about to call a question, recorded vote. Counselor Dilaw, how do you vote?
Yay.
Counselor Cameron, how do you vote?
Yay.
Uh Counselor Deshaun, or just Deputy Mayor Deshaun, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Counselor Hunter, how do you vote?
Yay.
And say a vote yay. So the motion carries and it carries unanimously. All right, so that ends the seven F. And now I'm going to. Seven G, the Cardinal Pool Tender Award. And just have a quick review here where I am. We have the briefing note on page eighty nine, two page briefing note eighty nine and ninety. And then a recommendation on page ninety one. So Chair is open for discussion uh through the Chair to the C A O. Um, a- any opening remarks here?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure, maybe the uh facilities manager would like this sort of. Certainly, if that's, uh, that's okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the uh tender was issued on the eleventh of February. Um, it was sent out to five commercial pool companies, three of which we have done work with in past years. And uh we had two, uh, two bidders that came in on, on, we, on or before imposing. Um, and those figures are in front of you, Acapella Pools, uh which are located in the Kitchener uh waterloo area. And then some pools which is located in Ottawa. Um, I indicated the, the scope of the work for the, the two uh projects. Um, indicating what they, they bid on. That was part of the bidding process. Um, the uh planned work schedule is the pool filtration system. Uh will be upgraded before the pool uh opens in June. And the piping, uh retro fitting of the, of the deck and the piping will be done in the fall. Just based on availability of the schedule of the uh, the, the word, the potential awarded contractor. The current pool filter will be removed by a third party contractor. It's not part of this contract. Um, and um. That will be done prior to, uh it won't be done until the new filter is on site. It will take about a day and a half to two days to, to take that apart, weld, uh bring welders in. And cut that up, but we won't do that work until we know for one hundred percent certainty that the new filter is on site. Just in case there is a problem, because the filter system does come from the United States. Um, but there is one uh that both contractors had placed uh a pre-order on. So it's uh, it's quite. I'm confident that uh the filter system will be in, but we won't do that work until such time that we know it is for sure. And the financial considerations talks about a ten percent contingency fund. That is on the pool line and the decking only. There really isn't any extra cost that would potentially be incurred in uh installing the filter system. Other than taking out the old one, which our, our staff will work with a contractor to do. Uh, so the recommendation, as you see, uh is.
So I have Counselor Cameron and Counselor Dilaw, Counselor Cameron?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh through you to uh Mr. Spencer. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed here, Mr. Spencer, because. We were sold, we were sold that these lines had to be put in before this pool could even open next year. That, that, that was handed to us, that the pool may not be able to get open unless these lines were changed. Now we find out, oh, well, gosh, they're gonna last now till next fall. Through the Chair, Counselor Cameron, um, there's no guarantee on anything. Um, but um there is one area that our staff will, will fix prior to opening. Um, and uh we are hoping that the mandate uh effect will work. We have had um engineers in to look at it and they feel that it will be satisfied. It will satisfy the health unit requirements and it will work properly for the season. But the, the work will be completed in the fall on, on the entire lighting system. But the, the work will be completed in the fall on, on the entire lighting system.
Follow up.
So, uh, okay, so, yeah, okay, so follow up with that.
Yes. Um. Oh, okay. Now of the, of the five, uh, three obviously did not uh submit three, three uh packages did not come back to us, I understand. Um, any idea why? And my other question is, has that the local done work for us people?
Uh, through the chair, uh to Counselor Cameron, yes, both of these companies have uh provided services to us in various capacities or. Uh, why the other three didn't uh put a bid in? I, I, I have no idea. I do have proof that documentation was sent.
Thank you.
Counselor Dilva. Uh, yes, I guess I, I see where the, where the total of two seventy three comes in with seventeen thousand. Is that right, uh, Mr. Spencer?
Uh, through the uh chair to.
And uh, why can't we cut a deal six grand? Like, I mean, we give them two hundred thousand and they want, they want another six grand, take the old, old filter out. We can't do it, right? Because we need a welder.
Through the chair, Counselor Dilva, this isn't Benson Pools that is doing this work. This is us having a local welder, welding company do the work. This, this work is not part of.
Credit program?
That's correct. It's us doing the work prior to um them delivering the new filter.
So, s- so the briefing, uh, did, do you wanna follow?
No, you go ahead.
Well, the briefing note says remove the old filter.
Right.
Approves the cost of six thousand to remove the old filter.
That's correct.
But they're installing the new one.
We Benson Pools is installing the new one as based as part of the, of the above awarded tender here figures that are there. We've added an additional six thousand dollars for the municipality to work with a contractor, not Benson Pools, a local welder to dismantle it and take it away.
Yeah, is this local welder that really care? To, to, to Mr. Spencer, is that local welder gonna be hooking up the new one then?
No, that's part of the, the contract.
With Benson?
That's correct.
So he's gonna bring his own welder?
Absolutely.
Okay. Further discussion, further questions?
If I, if I can just say one thing, this is when we uh did the pool filter at the Johnstown Pool back in the summer of two seventeen, I believe, or two sixteen, we did the same thing. Um, the contractor was awarded the contract for supplying the, the uh, the pool filter. And we had at the time Prescott machine and weld and dismantle the, the, the old one and, and take it away.
Okay, so back to Counselor Cameron, then if I don't see any other hands, I'm gonna move to okay, I've got Counselor Deshaun following Counselor Cameron, Counselor Cameron.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going through you to Mr. Spencer, then if, if that's the case, that we knew by replacing the Johnstown Pool, why wasn't that relayed to us when we had seventy three thousand five hundred dollars set aside for the new filter? Because I'm quite sure that every one of the members of council sitting here figured that was an install price. Now we find out that staff already knew that it was gonna cost them another six thousand dollars. We weren't informed about it at the time. I, I, I.
Are you talking about Johnstown?
No, I'm talking about the
Through the chair.
The filter, the filter, the filter in Cardinal has to be replaced, and it's going to be replaced ahead of putting the lines in. And it's gonna cost us six thousand dollars to take that out. Now, Mr. Spencer just told us that previously the Johnstown Pool, that's the way they did it with the Johnstown Pool. So the staff must have known that there was an additional charge over and above when we agreed that seventy three thousand five hundred dollars was gonna, gonna go to a new filter system. I'm under the impression that that was installed.
Through the chair to Counselor Cameron, that was correct. And as you feel see in the financial considerations, we had budgeted for the total project of two hundred and seventy three thousand five hundred and this cost comes in at two seventy three oh eighty four. So we are.
That includes the six thousand?
Yes, it does.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, Mr. Mayor, I do apologize for that statement. Uh, uh, or any implication on that statement. Um, I'm, I'm so sorry. I did not uh read that uh thoroughly and correctly that the six thousand dollars was included. I thought it was.
No.
Thank you.
No problem at all.
So now I have Deputy Mayor, just one, just one, and it's just thinking about um the the decking that, that's going to be um replace the interlock. Is it safe to assume that the interlock is gonna go back or through the chair to Mr. Spencer? Um, that that interlock will go back, will be the interlock that goes back in place?
Not, uh, through the chair to the deputy mayor, uh, not potentially the existing.
Something possibly.
Yeah, but it will be.
So just to further that, so is there, if, I mean, it's gonna be late just before winter. If they're settling and cracking or anything in the lines, is there a guarantee or warranty on the product that we're actually receiving? Because it won't get used until June of the next, the next year. But there's a potential that, you know, you can see shifting in all those, in a lot of those, I'm assuming that the work's gonna be fantastic, but is there a warranty period or anything like that?
Through the chair to the deputy mayor, there may be a one year warranty.
One year, okay.
With a, excuse.
Yeah, sure.
Is there a holdback?
Uh, through the chair, no, there is not.
Warranty without a holdback is.
Um, through the chair, um Benson Pools has been in operation for well over sixty years and has worked, has done three major retrofits of our pools. And they are a very valuable uh company uh through the Eastern Ontario area. So I'm quite confident that if there are issues that uh Mr. Benson and his crew will um make sure that everything was rectified.
That sounds nice enough. So no further discussion. If there's no further discussion, the, the chair is prepared to uh hear a mo- a mover and a seconder to action the recommendation. I'll move that. So I'll have Deputy Mayor Desham moving. Does he have a seconder? He has Counselor Cameron seconding. Now the motion is formally on the floor. Further discussion, if any. Hearing none, about to call a question, those in favor. Chair, third motion carried. And we're moving on. Uh, so now I'm at number seven H, Johnstown Multi Use Surface Pickleball and Tennis Courts. So uh we have a briefing note here that goes ninety, page ninety two, ninety three, ninety four, and at the top of page ninety five, I have a recommendation to execute on the uh, the uh intended briefing note. So chair is open for discussion on the briefing note and the recommendation. Speakers of any. See no speakers. Okay, so I have a speaker. So I have a, a Counselor Dilva that is figured out. A millisecond before he, he. Okay, so a millisecond.
Um, the only thing I, I like to do, uh, uh, I'll move this motion if we could just have a, a, on the Johnstown to multi-use surfaces, attempted commit subject to successful of grants. Grant, not a grant, but grants and donations be added, uh, Mr. Mayor. And that's the head of the grant, just one grant.
Granted to a six, subject to successful.
Grants and donations.
S- to take out the word ah. Successful grants and donations.
Providing services, yes.
Okay, so the motion is not yet on the floor. You're prepared to move it, but it's not yet on the floor, so I'm adjusting the wording before the motion comes on the floor. And it will now read subject to successful grants and donations in providing staff assistance in executing the project, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Is that your intent?
Yes.
All right, so the wording has been slightly changed from the wording that we have in our paper and Counselor Dilva is moving. Does he have a seconder? Don't see a seconder yet.
I have, I have a question.
I have a question.
Okay, so question Counselor Cameron, followed by Deputy Mayor.
As the recommendation reads with the, with the amendment and changes.
Not an amendment.
What is the taxpayer on the hook for?
Uh, that should be, that should be in the briefing.
Is I'm seeing. All right, I just, I just, I would just like to be, I would just like to be sure about that, Mr. Mayor. Is it a hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Uh, let's go to the C A O. What is the total? Uh, well, of course, now, let me uh, just so that Mr. Grant is not stepping into a quidmire here, uh, the, the intent of the motion is subject to successful grants and donations, which means that the township taxation portion wouldn't be known until we knew where we were with grants and donations. Is that correct, Mr. Grant?
Uh, th- through, through the chair, that, that is correct. But what I could indicate is uh with respect to the uh Resilient Communities Fund, the, 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 the plan would be, i- if that uh fund was um successful, that we would, we, we'd be looking at approximately twenty six thousand in, in, in twenty twenty two. And I'd recommend that that be taken from uh the, the, one of the reserves, the, the um dedicated capital reserve and then put fifty three thousand two hundred in the twenty twenty three uh budget for, for, for completion of that.
Okay, so do you see the financing package?
I, I do, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to follow up question on that. And that has to do with the grant, where the grant uh in the explanation, I believe we can borrow two hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, hang on now, if I go borrowing here.
Not borrow, but get a grant for two hundred thousand dollars, I do believe.
It's not the application.
So through, through, through the chair, there's a, there, there's a maximum of uh, of two hundred thousand uh in, in, in total o- over, o- over two years.
Yes.
And it's a maximum of a hundred thousand a year. Uh, but uh, one, one of the uh, the, the reasons that we're not sort of going for, for full maximum value is uh, the feeling that a, a breakdown is, is probably with, with the township paying a portion and potentially as Sarah uh paying a, a portion, it, it might be deemed as a, a more palatable uh application uh through the interior.
So in other words, we're not applying for the maximum amount of grant?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, now just to get us uh fully uh informed here, is this the same source that we went to on the first round?
It is, it, it is a different uh gr- uh, a different stream.
Okay.
But it, but it, but it is through, uh, it is submitted through the Ontario Trillion Fund.
Okay.
But it is a different.
Different stream, right. Okay, fair enough. Okay, dep- well, first of all, uh, now, let me just think where I am here. Counselor Dilva getting in ahead of you and then you, and then Deputy Mayor.
Well, all, all I want to confirm is the fact that even if we do get this real, the uh, the uh trillion grant, the taxpayer will be on the hook for twenty five, twenty six thousand dollars in the first year and seventy or fifty fifty three thousand two hundred in the second year.
Yes, through, through the chair, yes, which would, which would be the seventy nine thousand two hundred.
Correct. And, and Mr. Grant, am I, am I right in saying then that those numbers that you've just used would be further reduced if the Sarah application is successful with, at the port project stage?
I, 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 I would say that the, that, that, that is quite possible, yes.
Okay, okay. Depending on what sort of an arrangement comes out of that application.
Y- yes, uh, uh, through, through the chair, there, there's certainly a, a, a number of unknowns and it's hard to capture all, all, all of those uh, uh, unknowns at the, at this time, but um it's one of the went forward that, that proposal just specific with the, with the community funds, but if there's additional uh donations, contributions and, 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 and grants, it would, it, it, it would uh decrease the, the township portion.
Deputy Mayor? Uh, two, two comments if I can. So uh, one with the proposed uh amendment and it's.
It's not an amendment.
Um, came in before the motion went on the floor. So, so the proposed motion then um now says grants and donations. So if we do not get two grants, then we don't do anything? If we only get one grant through the, through the resilient fund, then we do nothing. But because it's not grants, then it would be grant.
Well, let me see where the verb is. It's a long sentence. I don't, let me just see where the verb is. So the committee recommends that council support Sarah by providing staff assistance in preparing and submitting a grant application unto the Resilient Communities Fund to replace the existing two tennis courts in Johnstown with two multi-use surfaces, outdoor surfaces, and that the township commit subject to successful grants and donations in providing staff assistance in executing the project and a financial upset contribution of seventy nine thousand two over the two-year project. And so, et cetera. So the only part that is um contingent on a successful grant and donation is the com- is the township commitment to provide sta- staff assistance in executing the project, which I think is a, is a manageable, is a manageable qualification here. It's a manageable qualification within that phrase.
So we don't need more than one grant?
No, uh, uh, you know, I mean, clearly the intent is to, of the, of the way it's worded is to indicate that we're hopeful to get more than one grant. May I pardon?
Yeah.
Get more than one grant to reduce the cost?
Yeah. Yeah, I get it. I want to get it done either way. I just don't want us to put a letter in there that stops us from getting it done. That's, that's my, that was my worry with, with that change. So uh, having said that, um, I have to say that I absolutely am, am impressed with the way that the staff has has worked at this, listening to uh Counselor Hunter's um conversation about the Spencerville arena with the idea of moving the pickleball uh here and inside, and I like that the suggestion is there that um, maybe we work with Prescott to um provide alternate dates. I think both of those uh recommendations being brought forward and including in this makes this uh even better than, than what it originally was. So um, uh, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Counselor Hunter next, and any, any other speakers after Counselor Hunter?
That's all. Well, I see we're going, uh, I see the maximum, we're committing, the maximum's gonna be, be roughly eighty thousand dollars. The township's gonna put towards this over two years. I just, question is, uh, at the start when we, Sarah said they, they was up to seven thousand dollars, they were willing to put into. Well, we've got fifty two hundred in the first year, but nothing from Sarah in the second year. We actually reduced what they offered to pay.
Well, uh, I think that uh the, the fifty two, the way, the way I'm reading the briefing note, and I'll ask Mr. Grant to clarify this. But the way I was reading the briefing note is that, and I'm aware that, that Sarah had committed seven or even eight thousand dollars, but the way I'm reading the briefing note is that Sarah wanted the application that's going to the Resilient Communities Fund to show that they were putting up five percent of the total ask. The township would be putting up twenty five percent of the total ask. That would total thirty percent of the total ask. And so I, the way I'm conceptualizing it in my mind is that Sarah is saving some money back for the second round. Now, that may or may not be correct, but that's just the way I'm seeing it. And I'm just looking at the, at the the, the proposed funding breakdown for year one shows the fund providing seventy percent and then Sarah and the township providing the other third. I'm assuming that that, we did that deliberately so that our ask would not be the maximum and would be below seventy five percent.
Correct, correct. Through, through, through the chair, I, I, I do believe that, that, that Sarah has committed up to, up to seven thousand uh to um, total, uh, um, with, 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 with. Uh, to, um, total, uh, um, wi- 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 with respect to that. Uh, but ba- basically the fifty-two hundred was, what, what was five percent in for the purposes of this particular, um. Uh, breakdown, I was looking at seventy percent from the resilience fund and then flip-flopping. The, the, the thirty-seventy percent in, 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 in year two, with their going, uh, in year two with, uh, potentially Sarah. Pay one, one, one or two percent, uh, was just for. I guess ease of, uh, presentation.
Well, and, and the other part of it, of course, is that if Sarah's application at the port is successful. It may end up being considerably more than the, the remaining thousand or two thousand. Because that would be their contribution in the second year if they're successful.
So, so, so through the chair, uh, what you're saying is Sarah has indicated, uh, sort of seven, seven thousand and that would be their, their. Total commitment, so if, 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 if the, um, if they're successful with a portion of that, um. Uh, a grant to the world of Johnstown, that, under that community grants pro- project, their, their, their willingness was to put up seven, seven thousand. The, the, the fifty-two hundred is not in addition to that, it's, it, it would be incorporated into that. I just didn't, I, I just didn't want, the, the, the feeling that, that, that all of a sudden, uh, Sarah had indicated, um, twelve thousand, it's just.
Follow up?
Uh, just, when we're talking about different applying for grants. There seems to be a. I don't know. Funny way they deal with grants and, and try to. There, and, uh, I understand we've got the option to go into the port to. Come in here, but, uh. I don't think we mentioned this at all when we go to the grant, but there might be another grant someplace else, that we could be, uh. Trying for in the, in the township. That would be, if we get this, if we get. Fifty thousand from the township, that could reduce the cost for the, to the town, uh, taxpayers by fifty thousand. We're not telling for any development, there's a chance of. Money coming from some other corporation.
So, so through the chair, uh, that, that, that is correct, the, the, the intent is that, that, that it's submitted not, not, not as. Uh, we have some other potential grant opportunities, so don't concern us.
Credit or donation.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, most of these grants that are coming out these days recognize, um, there's a recognized piggybacks. Most likely. Yeah. Especially now, I mean, this is coming out, this is coming out under the resilient communities fund. And the government is pouring a fair amount of dollars into that resilient communities fund to get. Various other organizations back up and running again, so I think they're being fairly lenient in their, in their, um.
I just don't have much confidence in them, they're waiting, very lucky. We're gonna end up paying for the other port, I don't want it, no, I do.
Okay, further discussion of any, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry. And, and, and if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, uh, within the recommendation, you'll, you'll, you'll notice that, that I've indicated township commit. Uh, ver- versus typically it would be council. And, and, and part of that was that with that flexibility with respect to the, uh, port of Johnstown.
Oh, I see, use the broader term.
The broad, the, the broader term, that seventy-nine thousand may be a combination of.
Right.
That's why I asked the question.
And, and today's.
Yeah, good. Okay, so I have Counselor Dilavah signaling his willingness to move the motion, does he have a seconder? I have Deputy Mayor DeSham seconding. Now, uh, further discussion on the motion that's on the floor.
Just one, okay, question, this. Listen to, uh. Pickleball court being set up in Spencerville, eh?
Uh, that's implied in the briefing.
And, and, and part, and part of the recommendation indicates that to, to, um.
Right, right.
To establish a schedule to make.
Yeah.
An inside of the Spencerville, available at no charge between April and September.
Right, so it's, so it's there. Yeah, it's there.
No, it's there, but still to feed the purpose of the tents.
Okay, and, go ahead.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I just have a comment, but I'm going to, I'm going to support the, uh, the recommendation. Uh, however, I just want it understood by. By Sarah that I really do hope you look for port funding through their, through their, uh. Their program that we just talk, talked about, uh, because I, this year especially with. The two-point-eight-one increase and, and all of, all the. Projects that we have going that are, that are, and we're borrowing a million dollars, uh, I, I really do hope we can keep the taxpayers portion down. Extremely, uh, extremely low on this, it, it kind of totally. Uh, the first year's up twenty-six thousand dollars, on perspective, that's not a lot of money to get things going. But, uh, I, I certainly hope we do get additional, uh, additional dollars. Yeah, but I will support the recommendation.
Further speakers to the motion. No further speakers to the motion, I'm about to call a question.
Record your vote, Mr. Mayor, please. Sorry about that, you don't have a ladder, do you?
I don't have a ladder, let me make a ladder.
We need, we need a ladder.
No, I haven't got a stamp, we can stamp it.
Yeah. Okay, uh. I'm about to call a question, Counselor Dilavah, how do you vote?
Before, uh, Mr. Mayor, is that with my changes, grants and donations?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah. Uh, yea.
All right, Counselor Cameron, how do you vote?
It would be aye.
Deputy Mayor DeSham, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Counselor Hunter, how do you vote?
Yea.
And Seo votes yea, so motion is carried. All right, so now, I'm. I'm at. Eight on the agenda, eight, eight on the agenda is counselor inquiries or notices of motion. Does anyone have anything to bring forward as an inquiry or as a notice of motion? I see nothing coming. I'm about to move on to item number eight, item number eight is the mayor's report. Uh, I have no report other than the, uh, six items, three items I brought up under discussion items at number six. So I'm moving to item number ten on the agenda. Item number ten on the agenda is question period, questions related to, um, matters that were. On this evening's agenda. So I have two folks in the gallery and I, I have one person in the, uh, on the Zoom. So go to the gallery first, questions from the gallery. Not, no questions from the gallery, okay, questions from the Zoom. I see, um, so Jackie, there's there? No questions there?
No, I don't have any questions, but I do want to, to thank you for considering the Johnstown proposal and especially the opportunity to use the arena over the summer.
Thank you very much. Um, all right, so now there are no further questions. I'm going to proceed to item number eleven on the agenda. Item number eleven will be a closed session, we'll pass the motion to go into the closed session here in the open session. And then we'll have a short break prior to convening the closed session. Who has the motion to go into the closed session?
Come on, I there, myself, second with Deputy Mayor DeSham, we're proceeding in closed session at eight twenty-eight P M. Section two thirty-nine, two B, personal matters, but we identified individual including minister of local board employees. Certainly recreation and public works and events, closed session date, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
The motion is going to close session, those in favor? Motion is carried. And, uh, so now we'll have just a five-minute break and then come back to the closed session, so. Now, reporting out of the closed session. I have a motion in front of me, moved by Counselor Dilavah and seconded by Counselor Cameron. The committee receives and approves the closed session minutes. Dated February the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two and February the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two as amended. Budget meeting number five. Those in favor? That motion is carried. And I have a second motion in front of me, coming out of the closed session. Moved by Counselor Hunter and seconded by Counselor DeSham, Deputy Mayor DeSham. The committee recommends that council maintain a forty-hour-per-week contract position. Until the fall of twenty twenty-two. And advertise for a full-time recreation coordinator position to start. October the third, twenty twenty-two. Gonna call the question on that motion, those in favor?
Can we report this?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I know, you're gonna make a ladder.
I gotta make a ladder again. Okay, so. Counselor Dilavah, how do you vote?
Sorry, I wanted to, um, change that if I could, you've got the fall of, hate to be picky, but the fall of. Twenty twenty-two, I want it September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Well, wait a minute now.
And hired October third.
Well, I know, but that's incorporated to. It's maintain a forty-hour-per-week contract position. Okay, you wanted to say through September of twenty twenty-two.
September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And pick up October third.
I don't have any of this writing.
I'm sorry.
And I'm writing all this here.
I know you can do it.
It's gonna be a mess.
I know, I know, but I know you can do it this time.
Well, it'll get you nowhere, but keep trying. Okay, so the motion, now I'm assuming that Counselor Hunter is going to be agreeable with this. Okay, so the motion that's coming out of the closed session is the following motion. Moved by Hunter and seconded by DeSham, and I hope that clerk and the deputy clerk are going to get this, cause it's different than what it's on the paper. That committee recommends that council maintain. A forty-hour-per-week contract position through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. And advertise for a full-time recreation coordinator position to start. October the third, twenty twenty-two. That's the motion that's on the table, coming out of the committee. Counselor Dilavah, how do you vote? Counselor Cameron, how do you vote?
Yea.
Counselor, or Deputy Mayor DeSham, how do you vote?
Yea.
Counselor Hunter, how do you vote?
Yea.
Seo votes yea. All right, so that's carried, two or three, five, no. All right. So that, in addition to those two motions coming out of the closed session. Council also received a verbal report from the C A O regarding an ongoing process. Now that constitutes the report out of the closed session. And Deputy Mayor, I believe you have the motion to adjourn to me.
I do, I just gotta check the time, sorry. Nine twenty-one, so that, uh, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor John Hunter, that committee does now, uh, adjourn at nine twenty-one P M. I don't think anybody will want this one recorded.
Those in favor, uh, motion is carried.